The December fourteenth meeting of two thousand and twenty-three of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, noting the presence of all three commissioners, I'm going to ask Ms. Barbara O'Malley to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is our final meeting of two thousand and twenty-three, and the winter holiday season has started. So I want to start off by wishing everyone who celebrates a very happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a joyous Kwanzaa, or whatever holiday you may celebrate. The holidays are a special time for us to reflect and be thankful for the blessing in our lives. It's also a time to gather with family and friends. I'm looking forward to having both my sons at home and both hosting and visiting family. But I also want to recognize that not everyone may be able to experience the joy of the holiday season. Many of our neighbors are unhoused, hungry, or suffering in some way. So it's important during the season and all year long to remember those who are less fortunate and that we can uplift in some way. So as a reminder, the county's Point in Time Count donation drive, which collects donations for unchallenged individuals found during the pit count on the night of January twenty-third, is still ongoing. The Your Way Home's wish list will be open until Friday, January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. During your own holiday shopping, consider adding items to your shopping cart that can make a significant difference in the lives of the unhoused, such as hand warmers, dry bags to protect belongings from water damage, winter gloves, hats, and socks. The wish list can be found at yourwayhome.org. So thank you for your consideration and helping if you are able. And now I'd like to announce the Way to Go winners for December. The Way to Go Monco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 200 county employees have submitted nominations singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employees from the list of nominations, and each wins $150 in recognition of their work. So here are this month's winners. Our first winner is Carly Duco, a school safety specialist for the Department of Public Safety. Carly is passionate about school safety and speaks to school personnel through the lens of a safety specialist and a parent. That allows her to make practical suggestions while collaborating with school administrators. She's eager to help and genuinely looks forward to working to improve relationships with schools in Montgomery County. Next is Nicholas Hanera, a supervisor for adult probation. Nick is a true leader. He's the type of supervisor that, once you work for him, you don't want to work for anyone else. He's uplifting, respectful, genuine, and an all-around joy to work with. And next is Casey McDowpine, a deputy coroner in the coroner's office. Her submission says, "Working alongside Casey on a regular basis, I'm consistently reminded of her dedication and compassion towards the family of Montgomery County. She is extremely empathetic to those at one of the darkest times of their lives and always shows the utmost professionalism and care." And next up is Marlene McGowan, a caseworker for the Office of Children and Youth. Marlene was an employee of OCI for, OCY for eight years before briefly transferring to Community Connections. During her time with Community Connections, she continued to work in a part-time capacity with OCY to assist with the investigative department to ensure thorough investigations of child abuse. And our fifth and final winner for this month is Joanna Muth, Program Director for Developmental Disabilities. For those who report it to Joanna every day, she makes us feel valued and appreciated for the work that we do. Joanna is a great role model and holds the mission and values of a county employee foremost in her work. Joanna takes great pride in all she does. So I want to congratulate all the winners of the Way to Go Monco program, keep the submissions coming. I also want to note the presence of our controller, Karen Sanchez, our sheriff, Sean Kilkeny, our clerk of courts, Lori Schreiber, our treasurer, Jason Salas. Am I missing any row officers? And the president and our town council, Tom Lepere, as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Winder.
Great, thank you. I want to echo Commissioner Lawrence's holiday wishes. I went out and got my Christmas tree with my little guy, Max, at Mr. C's in East Norton the other day. And so I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season with your family and friends, regardless of what you celebrate. And as Commissioner Lawrence said, this time of year can be hard for so many people, particularly our unhoused seniors and others who are more vulnerable in our society. Winter weather can be very dangerous and deadly for those who do not have adequate shelter. As many of you know, Montgomery County issues a Code Blue cold weather emergencies based on the forecast by the National Weather Service in order to ensure that we can provide temporary shelter, food, and clothing to those in need. Our Code Blue system is currently triggered when the temperature or wind chill is expected to be at or below 20 degrees Fahrenheit. But starting December eighteenth, Montgomery County will be raising that threshold to be at or below 32 degrees Fahrenheit. This will allow for more Code Blue shelters to activate and offer a higher standard of safety for those who are unhoused. It also aligns more closely with our neighboring counties in Philadelphia and Delaware, as well as most counties in New Jersey. This change could mean an additional 42 days of more, more of shelter operations for our unhoused population based on the winter forecast. Montgomery County is proud to work with many service providers and shelters to ensure that those in need have a warm place to stay, and we are grateful to shelters in Lansdale, Plymouth Meeting, Pottstown, and Norristown, as well as our partners in access services and our municipal police departments for their hard work in keeping our neighbors safe. Whenever there's a Code Blue alert, you can take the following steps: check on your elderly friends and neighbors frequently to ensure that they have, their homes are adequately heated. If you see someone in need of immediate emergency assistance, call 911 or text. And if someone, if you or someone you know needs help or temporary shelter from the cold weather or a long-term housing issue, they can call 212 or text 898-211. More about, more information can be found via our website at montgomerycountypa.gov/CodeBlue. Today, I'm excited to announce that Montgomery County will be re-establishing its Commission on Women. The mission of the Commission for Women will be to represent the interests and concerns of women and girls of all races, ages, ethnic, and social backgrounds, religious convictions, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, ability, and social circumstances. It will serve as a body to advocate for the lives and well-being of women through building strong collaboration, sharing available resources, and educating and empowering women and girls throughout Montgomery County. We look forward to sharing specific details in the days and weeks ahead, including details on membership, responsibilities, and contacts in the coming weeks. That concludes my comments.
I like the mission of the commission.
Mission of the commission, it rhymes.
Commissioner Gale? Yes, I would also like to take a moment to wish the county employees and any residents across the county watching today a very happy holiday season. It's certainly a pleasant time, and those celebrating Hanukkah, hope they're enjoying their holiday in Kwanzaa in the coming weeks, and also a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy prosperous new year in two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Next up, we will have our homelessness task force update by Dr. Tamara Williams, our Director of Health and Human Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I want to start off by thanking you, Commissioner Lawrence, for having the vision and the foresight to create the task force and really using it as a vehicle to address homelessness in Montgomery County. It sparked a lot of conversation and action in some positive ways, so I want to thank you for that. Next slide. As a reminder, the task force was formed because despite some fairly steady trends showing a decrease in the pit count numbers, there still remained more people unhoused or homeless than there were short-term or permanent affordable housing options. And so the task force was created to bring together a diverse team to identify potential solutions that would have both a significant impact and help close this gap, and also identify solutions that were practical and feasible. And it really did serve as a catalyst for ideas and other activities. It was not intended to solve all issues related to homelessness and not really created around one specific issue. Next slide. So the task force began in April and concluded last month in November, and used a chair structure to guide the task force itself and also a very hard-working operations work group. This was clearly not work that could be done alone. The goal was to bring people to the table to identify goals and implement solutions, while also recognizing that with this diverse group, we might not always agree on the how of accomplishing our goal, but it did provide a forum for a diverse group of voices to be heard, and this can be seen in the membership representation here. So in terms of a shared goal, next slide. This is the vision statement that was endorsed by the task force. So everyone who lives, works, learns, and invests in Montgomery County has equal opportunity to live in an affordable home and a thriving community. When that opportunity is out of reach for some and they become unhoused, we want to ensure our citizens are treated with the dignity and respect every person should enjoy as we work together as a community to remove barriers and increase access to a continuum of safe and decent housing and support services for the homeless or those at risk of homelessness. Next slide. So this is a helpful visual, because when we think about addressing homelessness, as we all know, there's no one magic solution, but the most impactful solutions are those that include housing and supportive services. And it's important to think of housing in terms of a continuum that moves people from being unhoused or living outside to a range of housing options depending on their needs and abilities. And those options include, more so on the left, are the short-term temporary emergency shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing to more long-term permanent options, such as affordable rentals and homeownership. And this is the continuum, which has really guided the distribution of county resources. Recognizing again that addressing housing and homelessness takes active contributions and resources from the county and all municipalities, we want to take a look at the county investments and programs, many of which have been in place year after year. Next slide. So it's important to note that prior to the implementation of the task force, the county had already been making significant investments by prioritizing funding to address and support the full housing continuum. So for example, overall, Montgomery County's recovery plan had prioritized over $30 million in ARPA funds to respond to the need for more affordable housing, which includes the creation of new affordable housing units, creation of temporary and short-term housing facilities, preserving existing affordable units, increasing first-time homebuyer assistance, and programs that really create a foundation for the sustainable building of future affordable housing. And then highlighting that emergency and short-term housing end of continuum on the left of that visual, the county invested over $22 million in two thousand and twenty-two in rapid rehousing, shelter construction and operations, street outreach, and emergency hoteling. So when people hear about street outreach, for example, those are services that are funded by the county on a contracted basis. When residents need weather-related Code Blue emergency shelter, as Commissioner Winder just spoke about, or they need emergency hoteling, some of these programs are possible due to county funding and our contractual relationships that we have with providers for these critical services. Next slide. So highlighting the affordable rental and affordable ownership end of that housing continuum, the county has focused both on access to affordable housing and also helping individuals retain their homes. Additionally, we've invested over $11 million in the past four years to assist in the development of 310 units, and six developments have been completed since 2021. And then on the horizon, there are several other affordable housing developments in the pipeline. The county has allocated funding for nine affordable housing developments. But of course, funding alone does not automatically lead to housing affordability. This is work that has to be done in conjunction with others, such as developers, municipalities, and other stakeholders, each doing their part to see these projects through to completion. Next slide. I'm not going to linger here. These are just more details on the county investments, more on the emergency and short-term housing end of the continuum. Next slide. So funding investments are of course only helpful if they actually lead to some desired outcomes, and we know that these investments are paying off because we can measure those outcomes. So last year, Your Way Home served over 4,400 individuals from over 2,500 households with housing and other supports. Next slide. In 2022, 144 households were successfully rehoused through our rapid rehousing programs, and 236 housing vouchers provided by the Montgomery County Housing Authority were successfully leased by individuals participating in the Your Way Home program. And then going back a bit further, since its launch in 2014, Your Way Home has assisted 2,713 households exit homelessness into housing. That is over 5,000 people. Next slide. And then in 2022 alone, there were three completed housing development projects, and our first-time homebuyers program distributed $50,000 to assist with down payments and closing costs for the purchases of homes. And because of this, five people, five households, were able to purchase their first home. Next slide. During the time the task force has been in place, this group has been able to accomplish quite a bit in a relatively short amount of time. We've created a shelter implementation guide or a shelter setup guide for municipalities and agencies interested in doing so. We've added two Code Blue sites, and then also Pottstown Beacon of Hope will be operating a faith-based winter warming center this winter at various churches. And this sort of multi-site rotation approach has been used successfully throughout the county, and they continue to work on establishing a year-round shelter. Also during the year, we developed an encampment response practice guideline. Those were used by PICO to successfully work with providers in our network and carry out a process that was really led by outreach and engagement. Next slide. So as a direct result of the task force, and also after considering a multitude of potential solutions, there were three priority projects that were endorsed with an emphasis on strategic placement of shelters throughout the county so that those experiencing homelessness can access those resources in their home communities, and also because there are 62 municipalities in Montgomery County, and homelessness is not really the responsibility of only two or three of those. And with that, we want to recognize also the four municipalities who stepped up to support the work of the task force, and those were Lower Marion, Upper Morland, Lansdale, and West Norriton. We also want to recognize the operations group here, because this is really where most of the work with the municipalities was done as it relates to the task force. They were able to marry county and municipal resources, connecting the four municipalities to contracted service providers who could assist with shelter operations, along with faith-based organizations that played a huge role in moving plans forward. They also helped identify several models for short-term housing operations that could be replicated. So some of those options include using volunteers to staff shelters, or using professional nonprofit providers, or a mixture of both. We also explored having single fixed locations for shelters or rotating through faith-based locations. So what you will see in the plans, you can advance to the next slide. What you'll see in these plans is that really each municipality is different, and they tailored their plans using the models that I just mentioned, based on their needs and their resources. So starting with Lower Marion, their goal is to establish a Code Blue shelter, and they would like to serve five to 10 individuals, single adults. They are going to be using the model of rotating the shelter amongst different faith-based communities, and then also are working with a nonprofit provider, as well as the faith community, and also clinicians as volunteers, and their goal is to have a desired open date for winter 2324. Next slide. Upper Morland. At last check-in with Upper Morland, the desire for this municipality is for a Code Blue shelter to serve five to seven people, and they are still working on the location as well as their operating model. Next slide. West Norriton. So this is a more comprehensive long-term plan, which includes short-term and long-term housing. So here, they are really focusing on having units available for temporary but longer-term use until individuals can find permanent housing, and the objective will really be to include services that will ready individuals for permanent housing and to be able to maintain their housing. And so their plan is to be able to serve 30 to 35 individuals with a focus on those who are unhoused or living in encampments. The desired location is in the Norristown State Hospital site portion that is in West Norriton, and they have a desired open date of the end of 2024, and are looking at working with a nonprofit provider who can offer 24/7 monitoring and staff. Next slide. And then last but not least is Lansdale, who is looking at opening a Code Blue as well as a 24/7 shelter. They've been working with a nonprofit provider for space and operations, and the plan is to serve single adults. The desired open date for Code Blue is winter 2324, and TBD for the 24/7 shelter. Next slide. So in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, the task force ended last month in November, but the work will continue on, so we are committed to continuing to facilitate meetings with the four municipalities and collaborating until the projects are implemented. The Health and Human Services Office of Housing and Community Development will be the primary point of contact and facilitator for these meetings. And of course, work that goes on all of the time outside of the task force will continue. Next slide. I just thank you.
Dr. Williams, thank you for your leadership, and I'm going to note the presence of Kim Crowder, who was here as well, served as co-chair. Do you want to say anything, or you just wanted to?
I would like to be a part of it, and I think that it was really interesting, because it's one of the first times that we brought municipalities to the table. I've been, worked in Montgomery County for 17 years, so I'm aware of housing, and that's the first time that we've had real conversations with municipalities, and I think you can see it was very impactful.
I definitely want to commend everyone who participated in the task force. I want to make special notice of the four municipalities who have stepped up as well. As I've said, this is a countywide problem, and we need all levels of government to work on a solution for it. So we have 62 municipalities in Montgomery County, and as you said, Dr. Williams, it's not the responsibility of two of them to work on these issues. So I certainly hope that this work will continue in the next administration. And, you know, as I've said, the point of this task force was not to solve it. It's taken us a while to get here, but I think we've taken real concrete steps to moving forward on the issue, and also highlighting all the work that the county does currently on the issue. So thank you for your leadership of the task force. I know it was like herding cats and doing everything else, but it's great to see some tangible results coming forward.
Yeah, and thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to continuing this important work.
I appreciate the update, Dr. Williams, and would like to thank all the board members as well. It looks like you're making great progress in a short amount of time, and I wish you continued success next year.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will now move on to public comment.
First up is Karen D'Angelo.
Good morning, Karen D'Angelo. I live in Royersford, and I work at the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library at 1,001 Powell Street. I want to thank you again for your support of the library. Wish best wishes to our outgoing commissioners, and I'm looking forward to working with our incoming commissioners. The Montgomery County Norristown Public Library support that you offer doesn't just support the library in Norristown. It supplies, supports our four branches, our bookmobiles, which go to senior centers and preschools throughout Montgomery County, and as the district center library, we also support all 20 independent libraries in Montgomery County. And one of the things I never knew I was going to do as a librarian is we run a fleet. We have, in addition to the bookmobiles, we have four vans that go out, delivery vans that go to all 35 locations in Montgomery County and move over $1.7 million, over $1.7 million items throughout the county. So thank you for your support. We're really looking forward to the capital improvements plan for the library. It is going to really transform the library and Norristown and the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Up next is Sean Kilkeny.
Thank you very much. Sean Kilkeny of Jenkentown, also the Montgomery County Sheriff. I want to thank the commissioners here. Happy holidays to everybody. Specifically here to talk about two things. One is the budget for the sheriff's office, and praise the commissioners for some of the great resources, and then two, talk about Commissioner Lawrence. The sheriff's office would like to extend our sincere gratitude for your unwavering commitment to our office. Your commitment not only facilitated our standard budget needs, but also facilitated vital improvements, including three vehicle replacements, safety features for the procurement of state-of-the-art all-purpose robot, and new deputy firearms with sights, which will increase accuracy and cut liability. We also approved 15 additional body cams. Body cams have been great for the sheriff's office and law enforcement in general, not only for transparency for the public, but transparency for our deputies. It's assisted us in multiple investigations, both from law enforcement administrative, when our deputies were unjustly accused of doing things, in fact, when they were doing their jobs. So moving forward, we eagerly anticipate continued collaboration to enhance recruitment and improve e-filing procedures and provide comprehensive crisis intervention, which we've worked with, with county staff. So I really want to thank the county commissioners for investing in the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, all of you. We really, really appreciate it and keep that commitment going. Then I also too want to recognize Commissioner Lawrence, my friend, and who's done a great job in his seven years as county commissioner. So many monumental things he's done. You know, it's funny, I'm looking at the county logo there, and I see that those two folks from the 19th century there, and they don't look like Commissioner Lawrence very much. But Commissioner Lawrence, I want to recognize the historic fact of being the first African-American chair of the Board of Commissioners, and how he has guided this county with wisdom, dignity, and integrity. More than that, I'll miss him, because I usually need a running buddy when I'm out on these things. Commissioner Lawrence usually beats me by a couple minutes, but never really rubs it in. Here and there, I'll rub it in, and like Commissioner Lawrence, I enjoy beer, so it's always good that Commissioner Lawrence frequents many of the Montgomery County breweries that I get to see, and I could say, hey, what's good, what's bad? And he gives great reviews. So it's really been a pleasure working with Commissioner Lawrence and seeing his family here. I know it's a family commitment. It's a family commitment for my family to serve, and I want to thank you as well for your service. I know he'll do great things. So I look forward to working with Commissioner Winder in the future. Also want to thank Commissioner Gale. You've always been great to the sheriff's office. Really appreciate when you've come over and brought us food. No one, you know, the food didn't last very long when it was in the break room, so I want to thank you for doing that and your general support of law enforcement in general. So I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and Commissioner Lawrence shall be missed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Sheriff, and we can still continue to run and drink beer.
Up next is Leroy James Waters.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the last of the year, and I apologize for not introducing myself about a half a decade ago, but my topic is public safety, and I'm wearing my celebration shirt here because I've been concerned about, as a veteran, access to hospitals when we have storms. And one of the main ones was the Sturgis Street Bridge and that flooding issue. I had that about the year 2000. And actually, by 2010, the Times-Hurl got involved in my issue also, so this is, this is a great accomplishment for me. But speaking of stormwater, the Pennsylvania American Water Company is raising the rates, and my study of stormwater for the past 50 years or so has come up with an article that was in the Inquirer about the south state of Pennsylvania. The Pennsylvania Waterways Report finds Philadelphia region are among the most polluted. And my claim is the reason that the water company is raising the rates is because of the pollution that's in the, in the, in the Schuylkill River. And I am filing a formal complaint with the PUC, as I do in all cases, you know, part of my retirement from the telephone company formerly called Bell Telephone. But as part of my testimonial, which you'll all get a copy of this, is the erosion, sedimentation, stormwater result of the Stony Creek watershed into the Schuylkill River. Now, what I'm going to be using as part of my presentation or my declaration is this booklet. Now, page, the cover, as you can see, is the south state of Philadelphia Waterways. And then page two is a picture of Josh Shapiro as Attorney General, and what he's saying is environmental protection is one of my top priorities, also constitutional rights and our commonwealth. That's why our constitution gives all of us the right to clean air, pure water, and historic buildings, so on and so forth. Now, I believe I had given the county a copy of this a while ago, but if I didn't, I apologize. I apologize. But the idea that the water company is basically charging us to remove pollution, that for 50 years, the DEP has been reporting to the federal government under the Clean Streams Law, the degradation of our streams. Somebody has to be responsible for that. Seeing as it's part of the constitution, I'm figuring the water company, being a company operating within the township, or, you know, within the state, would have some kind of responsibility.
Sir, excuse me, your time is up.
You're doing a great job with the Schuylkill River Trail. I don't want to take any time to compliment you because then it takes away from the issues that I feel are very important. And basically, I think this should go to you.
Up next is Brian McCon.
Good morning, commissioners and county officials. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Brian McCon, and I am the first deputy director for the Emergency Operations Center with the county's Department of Public Safety. Chair Lawrence and Commissioner Gail, we recognize that this is one of your final official commissioners meetings. On behalf of Director Vest, who regrets that he couldn't be here today, myself and the entire Department of Public Safety, we would like to thank you both for your support throughout your tenure as commissioners. You both have been pivotal to the success of our mission. The residents and visitors of Montgomery County are undoubtedly safer because of you both. Vice Chair Winder, you've been extremely supportive of the Department of Public Safety since the moment you took office, and we greatly look forward to continuing that relationship with you and the two incoming commissioners when they take office in a couple of weeks. So again, Commissioner Lawrence and Commissioner Gail, thank you again for your continued service and support over the years. If either of you are looking for something to do next year, we still have a few vacant seats up in Eagleville, and you're more than welcome to join us and take a few 911 calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. You know, for, I guess, about two months, we came to the operations center each and every day, and that was enough for me. So that was enough. But thank you for all you do. Thank you for your kind words.
I have to add, it feels like that was over a decade ago. Please express my gratitude to all your colleagues. It was a pleasure working with you throughout the years.
Up next is Margaret Burke.
Hello, I'm Margaret Burke from Lansdale Borough, and that is in the North Penn School District, which I'm embarrassed to say is the only school district in the county that doesn't have their ninth graders up at the high school. Further embarrassing is that the high school was built in 1971, before even people with disabilities were required to be included in education there. And so the building is old and too tight and unsafe with people with disabilities. And I want to bring your attention to the fact that on January 16th, people in the district will be voting on a referendum. I hope everybody will vote yes, so that our ninth graders can be brought up to the high school environment and so that the entire building can be renovated and made appropriate for everybody, so there's more space to move around. With just refurbishments, that's not sufficient to widen the hallways and make it safe for people with disabilities, like my child, to roam the hallways of North Penn High School. So please, everybody vote yes. The other thing I wanted to direct to Commissioner Winder, thank you both for your service. But moving forward, I recently found out about a program called Project Search, which is an international program to provide internships for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Their employment rate is around 20%, which is atrocious. So this is a program that's been implemented in the offices of Bucks County. And I would very much like us to consider doing a similar thing in Montgomery County, where it would be a nine-month program for the students who come in and they do rotations through the departments in the county. And then after each rotation, they get letters of recommendation, they're building their job skills. It's a partnership between the Office of Occasional Rehabilitation, and it would include the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit and Office of Developmental Disabilities. And of course, everybody who wanted, department that wanted to do internships would have to be on board. And there's a lot of materials from Project Search, which I said was an international program, but also we could just look right over to Bucks County. Let's not let them outdo us by helping these students. And I think that this is their third year. For their first year, those students have employability of 70% after running through the program. So I would very much like us, moving forward, to consider this program. I'm happy to talk more about it with you. And there's a little information here.
Thank you for sharing that. We'll take a look. And thank you for sharing your son with me, you know? He comes out to a number of events, and that gives me a visual, right, of who we're advocating for. So thank you for sharing.
And referendum, January 16th. Everybody in the district.
January 16th. I just want to note too that that is only for residents of the North Penn School District. Residents of North Penn. And I'm, of course, a proud North Pennite, but do not live in the school district now. Thank you.
Up next is David Morgan.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. And I'd like to voice concern about the tax increase that's going to be considered of 13%. So yesterday's North Penn reporter, reporter, had mentioned 13% as the figure. At first, we just knew a mill difference, but now it's clear. And that is after 5%, then 8%, then 8%, so 13. At the top of that, beginning of the 30% in four years. I checked in Bucks County, it was 0% for the last four years. Bucks County's Finishes Justice Center, if we can only regulate our costs well and disclose all about this center, which according to the letter, which is on the website, from Skidmore, Owens and Merrill, is for 18 courtrooms, and it includes frittered glass. So I was wondering if that detail could maybe be economized, or any other details we can, to have it be for the common person paying taxes easier. There was a front-page article in the reporter about people who are going to food banks, and they're bombarded, is the word used, that so many people are trying to make ends meet. And so a 13% jump makes one wonder, well, how much is down the road? So I also noticed that the comparison was made in 2021, but if you add the increases, we might be, we might, of the four county area, we might be the highest per capita, even though we have more people, per capita, we might be the highest taxing authority rate. I also noticed that, I heard it first from Tom DiBello, he was coming to a meeting and noticed that Mrs. O'Malley had been reading all those awards of contract and RFPs. And now that we have this time, why not another minute, or at least for the public? Because we're saving about 25 minutes in the agenda. So I'm watching that clock. Now, also, we have the money already in hand because we had a bond issue. New money bond issue gave us 125 million. So we're looking for 30 million. Why don't we access that money we have right in the bank? And then defer any tax increase for quite a long time, have a zero tax increase. That would be great. Also, as I mentioned many times, on August 19th of 2021, the commissioners approved award of contract for 232 million with a yearly budget of 50 million. So it's 180 million, which I have yet to see how the spending is truly allocated in the website. Mr. Soltesiak, you know, you want to refine the website more. I went to the website yesterday, and I looked for the tool, budget tool, and I noticed that it was a year frame of 2016 to 2019. Well, just like the 2021 figure, it should be updated to the 2024 figure, same thing there. We should have a total, as a public, know where our money's going. Updates on how well is the courthouse looking now? Is it well done, or is it partly done? In the renovation there, that's part of the plan. About the park, how much is estimated for the park? Is it 78 million or something like that to make the park have trees? All those things as part of this project, which is enormous, takes away from the homeless. And it's too bad that the commissioners didn't keep a great, with hundreds of millions, a great deal with Norristown, so that we have that facility still in place. I commend the efforts you've done so far. I'm up.
Your time is up.
Okay. I want to speak during the Gail recognition, Lawrence recognition time too.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Up next is Lori Schreiber.
Hello, everybody. Lori Schreiber, I'm clerk of courts in Montgomery County. And I, first of all, want to wish a happy holiday season to all of the outgoing and incoming commissioners, but want to direct my remarks in particular to my friend and honorary cousin, Commissioner Lawrence. We have all become so used to you in this role as chair of commissioners, and seeing you at public events and gatherings. We've all learned of the trail system and other Montgomery County venues from your social media posts. We know where to go. And I know personally, I will miss you, and you have made a difference in the county, so I want you to know that. I know there will be other opportunities to say goodbye and that we will still see you. So I just want to quote Mr. Rogers by saying, "Often when you think you're at the end of something, you're at the beginning of something else." And with that said, Commissioner Ken Lawrence, can you tell everybody, what are you doing next?
I'm going to Disney World this afternoon. Thank you, cuz. I'm sure everyone can note the family resemblance there between us.
Up next is Jason Salas.
Thank you. First, I also want to wish happy holidays to our commissioners, our row officers, and our whole county family and all of our county employees. Commissioner Lawrence, I want to thank you for your service. Back in January, when you broke the news to me that you weren't going to run for reelection, I almost fell off my chair. Because I know how much you love this position, love this county, and really value public service. It is, it's in your blood, it's in your DNA. I also recognize that your family's here. Jen is here, she wants to confirm that you haven't changed your mind, as I've come to joke a few times. But you have led the county with aplomb through the pandemic, the continuation of the Justice Center construction, and putting a spotlight on our housing and homelessness challenges. You've been a champion for public transit and infrastructure and a cheerleader for tourism. Lori alluded to it. You will never let me live down the mistake that Mike Bowman, the president of Valley Forge Convention Board, made at their lunch a few years ago. My office collects the hotel taxes in the county, which is used to promote tourism, and he recognized me at that lunch as the most important person in county government. But that is not true. We're just functionaries. You are a true champion of the county and tourism. As others have said, you're always promoting the county or trails, Beer Me, or county breweries and distilleries. And we thank you for that. You're a leader, a friend, a mentor to so many, a neighbor to me. You are, as my tradition would say, a mensch. Montgomery County is better for your service. I thank you for your leadership, and I think I speak for all of us here, when I wish you luck in your next chapter, which I know we'll all be cheering for you. So thank you.
Thank you, treasure, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gail, for your service as well. You're also a neighbor, too.
I appreciate that.
Finally is Karen Sanchez.
Good morning, Karen Sanchez, county comptroller. I, all has been said, all the nice words have been said, I'm taking a little bit of a different tact. I feel Ken's, Blair, I feel like he might be getting a little bit nervous. It's not going to be that bad. To my friend, chairman of the board, Ken Lawrence, as commissioner, we've seen you, quote, "Use all of your power and all of your skills to make Montco a better place to live, work, and raise children. For we all know that, quote, 'A man who doesn't spend time with his family can never be a real man.'" Though the following isn't a quote from Godfather, I want to express my sincerest thank you and congratulations. You've been a wonderful colleague these past seven years, a great commissioner, and a loyal buyer of my daughter's Girl Scout cookies. We still know where to find you this winter when the cookies go on sale. And while we won't be working together here in the county in the coming years, the legacy you've left here will live on. In the near future, I will have to vote to approve your departure on salary board. So I have one more Godfather quote that I think applies to this situation. Quote, "There are things that have to be done, and you do them, and you never talk about them. You don't try to justify them, they can't be justified. You just do them, then you forget it." Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller.
That is all for public comment.
Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the November 16th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners and the November 30th, 2023 budget hearing minutes. Is there a second?
A second, though.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Karen, now we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved, and now we'll move on to the consideration of the proposed 2024 budget. Mr. Dorton.
Good morning, commissioners. So today, you're going to be taking action. Two act, or three actions are required. This is part of, this will conclude the 24 budget process that began earlier this year in May. The three actions that you're going to take are approval of the general fund budget, which is required by law to be adopted by the end of the year. Second action is the approval of our eight major, other non-general fund major operating budgets. In addition to that, the capital fund budget for 2024. Next slide, please. So the budgets you're approving are going to provide services to over 800,000 residents in Montgomery County. As you know, we are the third largest county in Pennsylvania, following Philadelphia and Allegheny County. Next slide. When you look at our population trends going back to 2020, these are census, this is census data, you can see the county is about 25% higher than our peer counties, Chester, Delaware, and Bucks. Obviously, these numbers are changing for all four counties. Next slide, please. Well, when you go back and you look at 2021, and you look at our audit of financials for all the peer counties, you can see that the county's the lowest in terms of per capita expenditures, and that's when you net out grant revenues. So it's pure operating. Grant revenues are offset by operating expenses that are required as part of the grant. Next slide, please. So turning to the general fund, and before I go through these slides and the numbers, we presented the proposed budget in November. This information has been on the county website, our detailed budgets, the presentations, and that includes the past years as well. So the information for prior year's budgets are still posted. They're under the finance department, so the public has the ability to access that information at any time. And obviously, we are available if there's any questions on some of those past year budgets. Turning to the general fund budget, as it was proposed, as you can see, we're projecting revenues about $56 million higher, expenses around $37 million. If this budget all panned out the way that we have it projected, we'd finish with a very moderate surplus of about 200,000. That would keep our fund balance at about, our unassigned fund balance at about 21%. And that's in the range of where the general fund has been in recent years. Next slide, please. The budget does propose revenue enhancement. It includes increasing the operating millage rate for the county to 4.788 mills. That would generate about 33 million of needed revenue to balance the budget, and it would take our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year to about 119 million. This is in the range of our fund balance policy, 18 to 20%, just slightly above the higher end range, but significantly lower than the AAA medians around the, or the AAA median around the country. Next slide, please. So if this budget is adopted with the revenue enhancement recommendation, as you can see, number one, revenues would increase to 568 million. It would balance out our budget on the expense side at approximately 568. It would balance out our budget on the expense side at approximately 568, 200 shy of that. And then it'll leave our ending fund balance at $119 million. That would be about 21% as I mentioned. Next slide, please. Overall expenses, 560, or overall revenues, $568 million. As you can see, about 52% of our general fund operating budget comes from real estate tax revenue. Another 37% is supported by federal and state grants that have offsetting expenses on the expense side. Next slide, please. Expenses, approximately $568 million as well. You can see that one of the major drivers on the expense side is Health and Human Services at approximately 39% of the overall budget. I will note our debt service at about 11% is significantly lower than, than many of the peers of our size, even with the capital program that we have in place. Next slide, please. So I did want to talk about a couple of real estate tax assistance programs. One that's available through the county, another that's through the Department of Revenue at the state level. The county program is a tax deferral program that was established by the Board of Commissioners in 2020. I'm going to talk a little bit more about it. The other program is a property tax rent rebate program through, as I said, the Department of Revenue that is, applies to not only homeowners, but renters as well. Next slide. So I'm going to quickly just run through the tax, the county's tax deferral program. It does have some requirements. Homeowners who are at least 65 years of age or older would qualify. It has an annual income limitation of $35,000 or less. It excludes 50% of social security income. And for renters, it's, it's $15,000. Obviously, homeowners would have to be current on their real estate tax bills. But what, the way this program works, if there's a real estate tax increase, whatever the dollar amount is from '23 to '24 is eligible to be deferred for future payment. That future payment would be when the property transfers either to family or the property sold sometime in the future. Next slide, please. Turning to the state program, which is, has had some changes in recent months and is really a great program for the residents of Pennsylvania. So there is a rebate program that you could be eligible for. Again, it has requirements, homeowners that are at least 65 years of age, widows or widowers, age 50 or older, and disabled people age 18 and older. It applies to both homeowners and renters. And right now, the rebate is set at, there's a standard amount of up to $650 annually. And there are supplemental rebates that you can qualify for that can go up to $975. The state is still accepting applications through the end of this year for the '23 rebate program, which is based on 22 income levels. But there has been some changes, which I'm going to talk about in the next slide. Next slide, please. So the state has changed the program a bit to the benefit of the residents. The standard rebate now provides a maximum rebate up to $1,000 annually. So this will begin in January '24. It'll be based on 2023 tax returns. And the supplemental rebates can take it up to as far as $1,500. They've also increased the homeowner household income level to $45,000. And also, on the renter side, it's gone from 15 to 45. So that, that's a significant increase. There is an inflationary factor that was built into the law. So now, as each year goes on, these income levels will increase with inflation, which will, which will be appropriate for the program. Next slide. So on the county website, under the Finance Department, we have information on both the programs. And as we did last year, the Finance Department's available to help our residents out if they need some help walking through either of the programs and any assistance with the applications. Most of this information, as I said, can be accessed right, right on the county website under the Finance Department. Next slide. So turning to the other eight operating funds that you'll be taking action on today. This is a summary of the revenue and expense. Next slide, please. Next slide. In addition to that, as I said, we do have a five-year capital improvement program that is updated with the budget process. You're taking action today on 2024, which, as you can see, projects about $209 million, or $209 million of spending. And, next slide, please. Just a breakdown of the major functional areas of where the capital improvements are being made. I would also add that we have, on the county website, there's going to be a link posted today to our web portal, which has all of our capital stories. So every project has detailed stories behind it with the numbers. They've been updated, and the public can access that information. It's pretty comprehensive. And as I said, we'll have a link to make it easy so that people can get to that very quickly. Next slide. So that, that's all I have for the presentation. As I said, it's our recommendation that the proposed budget be adopted as it's been proposed.
I'll put a motion on the table. I move, by, motion by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Montgomery that for the fiscal year 2024, the tax millage rate be levied on all real property within the county that is subject to taxation for county purposes shall be 5.178 mills on each $1,000 of assessed valuation of taxable property or .5178 cents per $100 of assessed valuation of a taxable property. Be it further resolved that for the general fund expenses of the county totaling $567,781,495 for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, are hereby appropriated from the revenues available for the specific purpose as more fully itemized on the budget form attached and on file in the office of the County Commissioner's Chief Financial Officer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Winder, any board comment or questions?
So I, I wanted to make a quick comment. So I would like to highlight a new direction that I've asked our senior staff to work on, to acknowledge and thank one of our most selfless groups of people in our community, our volunteer firefighters and EMS members. In Montgomery County, these volunteers risk their lives every time they go on a call for the safety of our community. So it's only right that we give back to them as well. I'm proud to say that we are working on a new program that would allow volunteer fire and EMS personnel to receive a rebate of up to 100% of their Montgomery County real estate tax as a thank you for their service. Our goal for this program is twofold. One, we want to acknowledge and appreciate the value of our volunteer fire and EMS members provide to our community. Two, we want to incentivize others to consider volunteering. Over the last three decades, there have been a significant decrease in the number of volunteer firefighters in Pennsylvania from 360,000, 360,000 in the 70s to less than 37,000 today. These positions play vital roles in ensuring the safety of our communities, and we are grateful for all the work that they do. More information will be available at our January board meeting. And if you're interested in learning more about becoming a volunteer firefighter or EMS professional, I encourage you to visit www.moncofirefighter.org or contact your local volunteer fire company for more information.
Commissioner Gell?
Yep.
All right, can we do a roll call vote on this? Do we have Ms. Washington on line?
Yes. Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Lieutenant Winder?
Aye.
Commissioner Gann?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes two to one. And I will move that the following eight operating budgets with expenditures as noted below are hereby adopted and that the proper county official, county officers are authorized and directed in accordance with the county purchasing regulations to expend funds for the fiscal year 2024 within the limits set below. And then the solicitor has sent me language to, as set forth in the budget presentation. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there, any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion passes two to one. 2024 capital fund budget. I'll move that the capital fund budget for the 2024 fiscal year is hereby adopted in the amount of $208,751,331, of which $153,208,961 shall be funds of the county. Be it further resolved that the proper county officers are authorized and directed to proceed with the following capital programs, subject to all applicable federal, commonwealth, and county laws, ordinances, regulations, and policies as set forth in the budget presentation. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? And are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes two to one. Thank you, Mr. D'Orton.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to resolutions. We have an authorization to release $970,000 to fund a Monco Forward loan to Upper Gwinnett Family Apartments LLC. Welcome, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you raise a resolution to authorize allocated Monco Forward loan funds, allowing the redevelopment authority to provide a low-interest loan of $970,000 to Upper Gwinnett Family Apartments LLC, the RDA Loan Committee has thoroughly reviewed the project and its associated documentation. Based on their evaluation, they recommend approval. The RDA revised the Monco Forward loan guidelines in June to provide clear pathways to housing affordability. The committee is confident in the project's potential for success and the positive impact of these 60 units of workforce housing on the community. Based on the definition of workforce housing as 60% of the area median income in Montgomery County, workers who provide essential services to our community would qualify for this housing. Providing pathways to reasonably priced homes for the county's workforce has an effect not just on those individuals, but on the economic growth and competitiveness of Montgomery County. While Alia Stanger, our Executive Director of the RDA, couldn't be here today, Kim Crowder, Director of Development of Walters Apartments, is here to represent the applicant if you have any questions at all.
Let me get a motion on the table. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the transfer of $970,000 to the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for the purpose of providing a loan to Upper Gwinnett Family Apartments LLC under the Monco Forward Loan Program, subject to certain terms and conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. I'd just like to comment that this is an important project. I'm glad to see that this project is moving forward. Proud of Upper Gwinnett for stepping up and being part of the solution to our housing issue. Any other comments or questions? Our hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next, we have authorization of planning assistance contracts for Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission, Satterton Borough, Upper Perkyomen Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Commissioners, thank you. Yes, we have authorization for three planning assistance contracts. These are actually the first three of 13 we'll be bringing to the Commissioners over the next few months for renewals for 2024. The first is the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission. Total cost of that contract is $134,166. It's split evenly between the municipalities' funds and the county services of $67,083. For Pottstown Region, for the next three years, they're all three-year contracts. We'll be primarily updating their comprehensive plan. It'll be the third comprehensive plan that Pottstown Region has undertaken since 2005. And they plan for a number of residents for six communities in Montgomery County, as well as two in Chester County. The second one is the Satterton Borough contract. Total cost for that is $61,398, split evenly between the municipality and the county, $30,699. We just completed a revitalization plan for Satterton, and we'll be doing some implementation projects for that, some grant writing, as well as looking at their zoning and subdivision ordinances for updates. The third contract is the Upper Perkyomen Valley Regional Planning Commission. That total cost is $109,152, split evenly, $54,576. They're actually in the process now of adopting the comprehensive plan that they've been writing over the last two years. So that will hopefully be adopted in the first quarter of 2024. And they'll be undertaking a regional zoning audit and doing some implementation for that plan as well. So those are the three contracts for your consideration.
Thank you. I'll move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined, and the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. D'Orton?
Commissioners, this topic of assigned fund balance was last addressed by the Board in 2021 for our 20 financial statements. I'm just providing this as an illustration of our recent audit of financial statements as of December 31st, 2021. General or governmental accounting standards allow the Board to assign resources for a specific purpose. And when a formal action's taken by the Board in our audit of financial statements on the balance sheet, these assignments are clearly carved out and displayed. As you can see, 2021, there were two assigned fund balance areas, pension contributions and debt service expenditures. The Board took formal action to assign those fund balances for future costs to be paid in both of those categories, which we've been doing since that time, point in time. So it is, it is a required action by the Board. And as I said, it will typically show up when we complete our audit after that action's taken. Next slide, please. So the action in front of you today would assign fund balance to three major areas. The first, you can see, would be $5 million of fund balance to be assigned to a future grant for the Norristown Recreation Center. The second assignment would be $4 million of the fund balance to be assigned to the county's housing and homelessness initiatives to ensure that everyone who lives, works, learns, and invests in the county has equal opportunity to live in an affordable home and a thriving community. In addition to that, the third assignment's a million dollars of fund balance to the county's food security initiatives for investment in all aspects of the county's emergency food infrastructure, including food distribution, food production, food policy and strategy, and coordination across all partners.
I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the assignment of $5 million of the general fund unrestricted fund balance to the Norristown Recreation Center grant, $4 million of the fund balance to the Housing and Homelessness Initiatives, and $1 million to the Montgomery County Food Security Initiatives. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. This is an example of us not just walking, talking the talk, but walking the walk as well. With this resolution for a dedicated fund to support housing, homelessness, hunger, and Norristown in our county seat, the county is showing its commitment to these key issues during a critical time of need. When I created the homelessness task force this year, it was designed to be short-term and action-oriented. By reserving these funds, the county can ensure that the strategies around increasing affordable housing and providing life-saving, short-term shelter will be able to be implemented quickly to meet the immediate needs of our residents. And as you heard today from Dr. Williams' presentation, there's already a lot of momentum and improvements with more to come. This fund will make sure these ideas are realized. This fund will also be supporting strategies to address food insecurity. As I've mentioned before, one of the first things I did as a Commissioner was to participate in the SNAP, Food Snap Challenge, and only use the average of SNAP benefits to supply all my food for one week, two weeks. It was one of the most challenging things I've ever done. It makes you truly appreciate what people go through when they're, when they aren't sure they can feed themselves or their children, and what it really means to be hungry. Since the pandemic, we've seen increasing demand on our food pantries. During the height of the pandemic in 2021, food pantries were serving 6,500 Montgomery County families per month. This year, the pantries are averaging almost 10,000 family visits each month. These families are our neighbors, our coworkers, our family, and our friends. We're working to build a better system to get more food out to more. We're working to build a better system to get more food out to more people. But people just don't need system improvement, they actually need food. So with this million, one million dollars, we will provide five hundred thousand dollars to the Monco Anti-Hunger Network to purchase food directly that goes directly to county food pantries, and the remaining will be used by our food policy coordinator to get food more quickly and efficiently out to residents. And finally, this county has always been a strong partner of the municipality of Norristown. We have invested in many infrastructure projects to support Norristown, and we're proud that Norristown is our county seat, and we're proud to be located here in such a diverse and historic community. One of Norristown's current highest priorities is the development of a recreational center. Norristown provides great recreational resources, but the current facilities are outdated and subject to flooding. We want to help Norristown in their goal to bring a recreational facility for all that will be an asset to the entire community and region. So we are reserving five million dollars for Norristown as they move forward on the recreational facility plan, and I look forward to coming back someday for that ribbon cutting. Reserving ten million of existing funds for this specific purpose will benefit the entire county and our most vulnerable populations. I'm proud to be a part of delivering these critical funds at this most critical time.
And I just want to say I'm really excited for my home area in Norristown, just as a product of Norristown Area Public Schools, seeing the challenges that the Norristown community faces, but how resilient the Norristown community is. And so I'm happy that we're making this investment in the future of Norristown. We have a moral obligation and a responsibility sitting right here in Norristown as our county seat to help our friends and neighbors in Norristown. So thrilled that we're doing this.
We will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. D'Artone. Next, we have authorization of electronic signatory for grant submissions to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. The county is permitted, when applying for grants to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to submit those applications electronically. In order to complete such an application, the county must have a designated county employee to sign the application. The resolution before you would designate Bridget Britis from the county solicitor's office to serve as that designated person who would electronically sign the grant applications to the Commonwealth.
I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby designate Bridget Bridgetz from the Montgomery County Solicitor's Office as the authorized county official and signatory for the purpose of submitting any and all grant-related materials to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Is there a second?
Second, second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next up, we have approval amendments to the collective bargaining agreements with ASME Local 676 and ASME Local 1582.
Thank you. The resolution before you is seeking authorization to enter into amended agreements with two unions, ASME Local 1582 and Local 676. Each agreement provides market adjustment corrections to two employees from each union based on the county compensation study. In addition, the amendment with Local 1582 would add pretrial service officers to the bargaining unit, and it clarifies the overtime policy that applies to the members of the bargaining unit.
I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the amended agreements between the county of Montgomery and ASME Local 1582 and 676. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And we have a couple of board appointments. I will move that David Naster be appointed to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Finance Authority to serve a five-year term beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending on December 31st, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We have a reappointment to the Montgomery County Housing Authority. I'll move that Reverend Charles Kwan be reappointed to the Montgomery County Housing Authority for a term to begin on January 1st, 2024, and to expire on December 31st, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We have a reappointment and an appointment to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board. I'll move that Bernard D'Angelo be appointed as a business representative and Jason Accree be reappointed as a local workforce representative to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve terms that begin on December 15th, 2023, and expire on December 14th, 2025, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And now we'll move on to personnel. Ms. Halen.
Good morning and happy holidays, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It's a four-page document dated December 13th, 2023, with a timestamp of 12:45. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and presented for your consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the December 14th, 2023, personal presentation as given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
So we'll now move on to the advertisements of bids and RFPs, Exhibit A, which were all posted. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisements of bids and RFPs for the Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We'll now move on to awards of contract, Exhibit B. I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I believe we have a comment from our COO on this.
One clarification on item number twenty-seven related to the amendment for the construction of the Chester Valley Trail. The public agenda noted that these funds would be reimbursed by the federal government, and the clarification is that they will not be reimbursed by the federal government, and they will be paid for out of capital funds.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Saltisiak. Any questions or any further board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit C. I'll move to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Do we have any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Mr. Gail, you have any closing commissioner comments?
I do. This is it. When I was twenty-five years old, I had this crazy idea that I was going to run for Montgomery County Commissioner, and a lot of people told me I was crazy. And I did it in a way that I'm not aware of anyone ever doing, seeking that position the way I did it. And it wasn't easy. I had to work extremely hard. I had to make a lot of sacrifices, and I had to have strong faith in order to accomplish that goal and to be twice elected to this position. And it's been an incredible experience. It's been an honor to serve the public. I got to know the residents of Montgomery County extremely well over the last eight years, and I can't thank them enough for placing their faith in me to serve on this board. And I remember when I first started running for this position, I guess it was February of 2015, my father was out of town on business. I think he was in California. It was different times then. And I called him, and I said, "Boy, Dad, it's really heating up here." He knew I was thinking about running. I said, "I'm pissing a lot of people off." I said, "I'm not seeking the endorsement of the Republican Party. They're trying to pressure me, get me out of the race. They're going to tell me I'm going to ruin my life." I said, "Do you think I'm doing the right thing?" And he paused for a moment, and he said, "Joe, when I was twenty-five, I wouldn't know how to get on the ballot for county commissioner. There's no way it's going to ruin your life. Just give it your best, and if you lose, it's not the end of the world." And that went a long way over the years, that conversation that I had with my father. And I gave it my best. I listened to what he had to say. I knew it was a long shot. Scientifically, I was never supposed to win any of my races over the years, but I started connecting with the residents across Montgomery County. And typically, people that run for office seek the support of the political establishment to get the party bosses behind them, the apparatus of the party, get them on the ballot. I had none of that support whatsoever. And I started going door-to-door to collect signatures to get my name on the ballot. So those of you watching wonder how you do this, you get signatures to get your name placed on the ballot. And the winter of 2015 was a very cold winter. There was a lot of snow, and I couldn't go to political cocktail parties and fundraisers where I was an outcast, all the people I'm running against. I had to get the voters, the people, to sign and have my name put on the ballot. So I trekked through the snow. I remember it was so cold, it was painful knocking on the doors, but because of the snow, people were home, and they found it interesting. I said, "I'm running for Montgomery County Commissioner. I'm Joe Gale. I don't have the support of the Republican Party, but I think you should have a choice instead of the party establishment determining who represents you on the Board of Commissioners." And the response was basically, "Hell, yeah. Sign me up. Give me that petition. I admire what you're doing. This is unique. It's different." I've never had anybody come to my door and do something like this. And from that moment, we built momentum. I started engaging even more with the public through a series of meet-and-greets called a cup of Joe, which was a catchy phrase for a coffee klatch, where over eight years, I had over one thousand cup of Joes, which, as I look back, I don't know how I physically ever did that. It was a lot of time commitment, but obviously, they were very effective because they were the key to my success politically. And I went to people's homes. They opened up their home to me, invited their friends and neighbors to come hear what I have to say, share my background, my vision for the future of the county, what I was trying to do. And night after night, there were people that would fill a living room, and I was energized by it. And I got to know the people of this county. Like I said, I didn't go to political functions and events. I earned the support of the public, and they put me in the seat. And I can't thank them enough for doing that. My cup of Joe hosts were people busy raising a family, running a business. They weren't, as I call them, political hacks or involved inside political baseball. They were normal, hard-working citizens of this county. And organically, it grew, where one cup of Joe would lead to another, people in attendance would host one, and I never saw anyone do anything similar to that. And that's how I was able to pull off my upsets. Every time I ran, it was a David and Goliath battle. I had the entire system stacked against me. I remember the first interview I did on Hank Cisco's TV show at the Norristown High School, was the former Norristown Ambassador. He gives everybody this big introduction. People in this room have been on his show, but you feel like you're on top of the world when he introduces you. But he says this guy was the Rocky Balboa of Montgomery County. He was an underdog. He came over, overcame the odds, and he won. And I was also the youngest ever elected to the position. So during my tenure here, it wasn't easy. I was outnumbered as a minority commissioner two to one very often, but it certainly built my character, and I developed a unique skill set that I look forward to using in the next phase of my life. All the negativity that I had to deal with, I actually don't look at it as a negative. In fact, I thank, it might sound crazy, but I thank those that have worked against me over the years, in any capacity they may have been, whether it was in the form of governing, whether that was in the campaigns, people that challenged me, ran against me, that worked tirelessly to stop it and try to defeat me. They made me a better person. They improved my work ethic, and they gave me a backbone that's very solid, I have to say. And at a young age, I was able to develop all those qualities, and I'm grateful that it happened while I was young. Because if I was, if it was later in life and I had children and a family of my own, it would be absolutely impossible to do what I did. So I look forward to the next chapter where I can use that skill set in my career and my personal life. And people sometimes ask me, "Joe, is it done for you politically?" I say, "I'm thirty-four years old. I don't know anyone in my peer group that even considers running for any type of office or getting involved in any civics, honestly." I developed a big network. I developed a lot of name recognition, relationships, and that's valuable no matter what I do in life. But politically, I could come back thirty years from now and still run for an office, which is unheard of. So I'm excited about the future. I wish Montgomery County well. I wish the staff and employees success in the future. I might not have always been the most popular on the eighth floor of One Montgomery Plaza with county staff, but there's been a countless number of county employees, just your average employee in this county, that over the years have given me the encouragement that helps me do what I've done over the last eight years. Whether you're an employee, grab me by the arm in the hallway and say, "You have guts. I admire you. Don't back down. Keep being outspoken." Employees have prayed over me privately. I really got to know them as well, and I appreciate their service to this county. I always credit the employees as the face of Montgomery County Government, and so many of them do a great job, and I'm grateful to have gotten to know them. And I always say there's three main pillars in life as far as my outlook, and that's faith, family, and health. And in order to have a successful life, I believe you have to have strong faith, strong family, and strong health. And my faith is very important to me. I've had the outlook that God is in control. He has a plan for all of us, and if you have that faith where you know that ultimately God's in control, you can take risks and you can do things that you might shy away from otherwise. So I always had that outlook that he was in control, and that was very important to me. And family. I've often said that family is by far the most important component to a successful society. I know that because I'm a product of a strong family unit, and I recognize that, and I'm blessed to have come from a strong family. I'm the oldest of three children in my family. My brother and sister are twins. They're two years younger than me. I'm the youngest commissioner in the history of the county. My brother's an attorney, and my sister's a physician. So all three of us have had success at a young age, but that was a direct reflection of our parents. Our parents are remarkable individuals. I know my siblings would join me in saying that. I got to meet a lot of families over the years, as you can imagine, doing over a thousand cup of Joes. And obviously, everyone's biased and thinks they have the best parents, but I know that my parents are exceptional, and they raised us well, and they gave us, raised us with a skill set that anyone would need to achieve success, and I consider them a tremendous blessing as well. And when you do have a role like this, you drag your whole family through it. My colleagues know what that's like, I'm sure. Like I said, I have a family of my own, but I did have siblings and parents that were very supportive of me, and it wasn't always easy on them, but without their support, it would never have been possible. And then health, obviously, that's easy because you can't enjoy life unless you have health. And sometimes this position can be stressful. It really didn't bother me. It bothered me if my family was affected by it or something like that, but it made me stronger. And like I said, I look forward to using this in the next chapter of my life. It's been a very valuable experience serving on this board, and I did my best over the years to be a voice for the voiceless. A lot of times, people felt like they didn't have representation. I made it my best. I made it my best effort to make sure they had a voice and frankly, it was a loud voice. I capture a lot of headlines over the years. Gale spars with XYZ, Gale clashes with XYZ, Gale fights with, I was described as a maverick, a fighter, a disruptor. But I set out to disrupt the status quo. I, you know, I look out, I think Congress has an 11% approval rating or something like that. Maybe not in this room, but generally speaking, the overwhelming public has a dislike of politicians, of government. They believe it's corrupt. And at my Cup of Joes, I wasn't talking about the bond rating and the millage rates and the budget. I dressed that and I could go full blown policy walk and talk all about it. But I talked about the endless cycle of corruption and collusion, backroom deals, pay to play, connected the dots for people and they never heard that anywhere else. But I was able to share that type of information with the public freely because I had complete independence. I was never elected with the support of the party. I was elected with the support of the people. So I believe I could be described as a populist in that sense, a conservative populist. You know, I, I remember right around the Christmas of 2016, walking in the basement of the courthouse across the street and Peggy Gibbons, who's a former reporter with the intelligencer who sadly passed away years ago, but she was still here as a reporter at that time. I'm walking down the hallway and I hear, she had a very distinct voice, if you knew Peggy Gibbons. Commissioner Gale. I say, oh boy, she wants an interview. And we at times clashed over the years with her style of reporting that I wasn't fond of, but I let her know that. And she said, I'd just like to speak with you for a moment. And she said, I've been a courthouse reporter here at the Montgomery County courthouse since, I don't remember now, 1971 or something like that. And I have to tell you, after watching your first year, watching your campaign, there was never a county commissioner like you. She said, you're the definition of independent. You call out both parties. You're critical of what you consider to be their flaws of both sides. I've seen many minority commissioners, she starts naming them all. None of them executed on the role the way you do. And I found it interesting that someone that was here for so many years took note of that. And that moment was always special to me. I've had senior judges and now retire echo the same remarks as her. And I believe that I'm, I left my mark here in county politics. I was, like I said, a voice for the voiceless. I tried to be a voice for common sense, a voice for fiscal responsibility. And I always use those three pillars of my faith, family, strong health, physical and mental wellness as my guide. And it's, it was remarkable. So I'd like to wish the county well. Not going anywhere, but I do look forward to the next chapter and I wish the employees and the next board success. Montgomery County is a great place to live, work and raise a family. It's a huge county. It kept me very busy over the years and I'm excited about its future. So from the bottom of my heart, everyone that made this a possibility, I thank you. And I just say, God bless Montgomery County. Thank you.
So first, I'd like to say, Joe, that's a lot of coffee.
You'd be shocked how many hosts didn't have coffee.
So, and Joe, what I'll, what I'll say is while our value systems don't always align and we're often on opposite sides of the aisle, I recognize that regardless of your political affiliation and your views, serving in this capacity is challenging. So thank you for your words and best of luck in the next chap, chapter.
Thank you very much.
I want to focus more of my comments on my colleague Ken over here. And I'm not going to look at him because I'll probably get emotional if I, if I do. So I'm just going to look at all of you. You all keep smiling and check him out if he starts tearing up. So, so, so Ken, I have been so, so lucky enough to work side by side with you over the course of the last year. And I've really seen firsthand, I didn't really fully understand. You know, I had always been around you and always been around Ken when I was on the school board, when I was on the Board of Supervisors in East Martin. But it wasn't until this year that I saw firsthand the indelible mark that you've left on this community. From transportation and infrastructure to homelessness and housing, which we've talked about, food security, parks and trails and beers, although I don't like beer. You've made it your mission to leave Montgomery County a better place since you arrived in 2017. Through your support of so many projects that candidly have taken so much time to get done around infrastructure. You have Montgomery, made Montgomery County more accessible, connected and effective to the betterment of all of us, our residents, our workers, business owners and visitors. You've been a leader in addressing homelessness and housing issues in our community. You led our county in committing the resources to address these issues at every level, as we saw earlier today. Allocating money to homeless outreach and services, new affordable housing units and temporary housing facilities, creating really a foundation for the incoming administration and county employees and residents in the future. You've been a champion for food security, addressing the gap that so many Montgomery County households who struggle to afford food are facing every day by spearheading the allocation that we just talked about. And of course, your love for Montgomery County's parks, trails and historic sites are well known. He's tried so many times to get me on a bike, to get me out running. And there's still a couple more weeks, but I don't think he's going to go anywhere in terms of trying to get me on a, on a bike and get out and see the beauty that are our parks, trails and historical sites. And so you've been a dedicated leader and champion in preservation and expansion of open spaces and our trail systems. And what's most important is that you've been a champion for our county employees as well. Spearheading the compensation study that resulted in 84% of our employees receiving a salary increase to ensure that they're getting market-driven wages. That's huge, right? Because our county employees are the lifeblood of our organization. And so oftentimes leaders are so in and focused on themselves. But Ken and the previous administration were focused on the lifeblood of our county operations. And so, and none of this could, could be mentioned without acknowledging an essential aspect of your tenure that's so important to me. In 2017, you made history by becoming the first African-American commissioner in Montgomery County. And I've lived here pretty much all my life. And so oftentimes, I never see anyone that looks like me in positions of power that are making decisions that affect everyday residents. And so when you made history in 2017, I had no idea that you would be paving the way for little old me. And in 2023, you made history again by coming, becoming the first African-American board of this Board of Commissioners, Chair of the Board of Commissioners. And so you've paved the way time and time again to bring inclusivity and belonging to all aspects of government and public service. And let me just say, just personally, when I received the word that I would be getting the appointment, right? Ken immediately took me under his wing, invited me into his home and never left my side every step of the way, right? And you all have no idea, when I stepped up on February 1st, the challenges that I would face, right? As the first black woman, as not the popular choice to become a commissioner, people from my own party. But he was a resounding voice every step of the way this entire year. And I could not have gotten through this last year and be prepared to serve in this new administration come January 2nd. So I am so grateful to Jen and your family for lending you to Montgomery County for all of these years, for the past seven years. I now know the sacrifice that families face when lending their loved one to public service. And Ken, I just want to thank you. You have no idea, you have no idea what your leadership has meant to me. And I'm glad that, I'm proud to call you a friend. I'm grateful for your support of me and I will not be getting on a bike. I will not be running the next marathon, but I look forward to your friendship and the guidance, your guidance as we usher in this new administration. So thank you. Words cannot express my gratitude to you and all that you've done for so, so many of us. But I hope that I can fill your shoes as I carry on your legacy in making great Montgomery County a best, the best place to live, work and raise a family. So thank you.
All right, you got me a little bit there.
Mr. Winder? I'll give you a minute. You can collect yourself. I think in the category of everything has been said, but not every.
Oh, you're doing a thing.
I'm doing a thing. Everything's been said, but not everyone has said it. So I'm going to, you know, file on just for a quick, a quick second. First, Joe, I want to thank you for your, the respect you've always had for the staff. And you know, this is, you guys have interesting jobs. My job is also sometimes interesting because it's obviously when the commissioners don't always either get along or aren't on the same page, the staff needs to find a way to work one way or another with all three commissioners. And you've always had an open door to me on, on these, on working together and I've always appreciated it. And to your assistant who helped me get that happen, Matt, you've always been a team player up here and I appreciate the way you've handled yourself and lent yourself to the team. So thank you. And Ken, you know, we've, we've talked about this. We've been obviously friends for a long time and I think sometimes it's helped and sometimes it's made it weird. But I think in, in the end, it has kept us steady and I think it has kept the team steady. And you know, I think when people get into these jobs in public service, you know, everyone's got their list of things they want to do. And then there's this other list of things we have to do. And you know, I think on many of the decisions we've had to make, you know, we didn't always end up where we started out. And I think that is actually a credit and a testament to your willingness and ability and interest in hearing all the opposing points of view and talking through issues, which is the heart of what these jobs are. And I think in the end of the day, we always like to think we always did the right thing. And, or we certainly try to. And I think we know it almost always was the right thing because it was in almost every case, not the easiest thing, which is one measure. So I think in this business, that is really all you can ask for out of our elected leaders and out of staff. And so thank you for leading us all these years and we look forward to your, I assume, public comment coming in the future. Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
I'm going to start practicing now. Start the clock right now.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's my final Board of Commissioners meeting, so I think it's appropriate to have closing comments. I've served for seven years, 84 months, 2,555 days, 61,320 hours. And someone else can calculate the number of minutes, but I'm going to take three more here. First up on the dais here, Commissioner Gale, Joe. You know, it's interesting, people, you know, or they're out there like, what's it like working with him? What's it like? And it's not so bad. I mean, in the room here, we can joke and we can go. I think sometimes people see what happens out here or going on. But I've actually been a commissioner with you longer than, than anyone else. So I wish you all the best in your, in your future employment. And you know, and I've always said it, it to, I don't know what I was doing at 25. It wasn't running for office and what you did was, was exceptional in stepping up. And we do need more people to get involved in the process. If you come back in 30 years, you'll only be a year older than I am now too. So, so there is, there is, there is hope there.
Thank you.
You know, Commissioner Winder, Jim Milla, my sister in service. Yeah, you got me there. You got me there. You know, the sky's the limit for you. You had to step into a whirlwind this year. You know, I was appointed, but I had two years before I had to run. You were appointed and you had to go to a nominating convention the next week. You know, when I became commissioner, no, nobody really knew. And it was actually Peg Gibbons who I think posted that I was the first African-American commissioner. And we, we haven't talked about that during my appointment process. But then people started to ask me, you know, how's it feel? How's it feel? And I said, well, I've been black my whole life, so it doesn't feel much different. And then I started to say, it doesn't matter that I'm the first. It matters that I'm not the last. I wouldn't have thought then that I would have the opportunity to, to serve with the second and the first woman, African-American woman. You know, you're the real deal. You're the real deal. And trust your heart, trust your instincts and just do the right thing. And like I said, the sky's the limit for you. Mr. Saltizziak, been a friend and brother for close to 30 years now? 25?
Let's back it up.
Yeah, let's back it up. He is a little younger than me. You know, Jen would, Jen would say, we haven't got to hang out these last seven years, right?
I'm looking forward to getting to hang out.
We've been working. We've been working. I appreciate your balance. I appreciate that you always can bring it back around. Sometimes I can go a little hot and you can always, you can always cool me down. You've been more than a friend. You've been valued. I don't know what we would have done over these past seven years. So I love you and I look forward to being able to just go out and hang out now and not, not talk about county stuff. You know, Ray McGarry left me. He was only my solicitor for about two weeks and, and came back. Ray, it's been great to have you back this year. Thank you for coming back and, and, and being a stabilizing influence and for your leadership and always your, your warm guidance. So I can't name all of the eighth floor here, but I have to acknowledge Regina, who left Temple to come out here and has tried to keep me on track for the past four years now. I know that that's not always easy. I know that I can be difficult, but I appreciate your grace and always keeping me on track. And then Barbara O'Malley, O'Malley, I call her O'Malley because that's what her email signature says. So her and Ray, her and Lee are a good balance. Barbara, Barbara's been our conscience in making sure that we always do the right, that we always do the right thing and doing that. So that's what I, that's what I think of when I think of you. And Lauren Lambrego was here. Lauren Lambrego left the county. She was the COO when I became a commissioner. And when I came in, I said, well, Lauren, are you, are you going to stay? Because I know you've been here for a while. And Lauren said that she would stay for a year and she left at 51 weeks. So you still owe me a week and coming to this meeting does not count for that. So in 2017, I was blessed with a tremendous opportunity to serve this community as county commissioner. I was born in Chester County, but my family moved to Montgomery County in 1984 when I was 13. And Montgomery County has always been a place of opportunity for me. It's a place where I received a great education and started my college career at the community college. Professionally, I've had the opportunity to work for the largest employer in the county and start my own small business. And personally, it's where I met and married my wife and where we've made our home and worshiped and raised our family. So while I was born in Chester County, Montgomery County is where I am from and it's made me the man that I am. And it's been an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to give back to the place that has given me so much. You know, I was asked the other day what my legacy was or what I thought my legacy was. And I immediately thought of Hamilton and I said, what is the legacy? It's planting seeds in the garden that you will never see. But fortunately, as a citizen of Montgomery County, I hope to get to see some of the seeds that have been planted during the last seven years. I'm not going to do a laundry list of accomplishments because that's not my style. And what I've said from day one is it's not about me. But I hope that part of my legacy... But I hope that part of my legacy is a greater appreciation for our county employees who work so hard for our community. Coming from corporate America and higher education, I was dismayed at the salaries that we pay our employees. It's not right for our county employees to have to work two jobs to make ends meet, and we can't brag about being the third-largest county and the second-wealthiest county and lose our employees to smaller counties and nonprofits. One of my favorite things about being commissioner is when I get thanked by a citizen for a service that the county has provided for them. I didn't do it, but I get thanked. Our county employees are here for all of us, and we need to be there for them. Some know, including the Controller, that one of my favorite movies is The Godfather. And there's a famous line in The Godfather that it's business, not personal. The county government is personal, helping people at their most vulnerable and providing services. And the people who provide the help and the services deserve to be compensated appropriately. I hope that part of my legacy is an increased awareness around hunger and homelessness in our county. I'm grateful to the employees, organizations, and advocates who do the work and support our neighbors in need and taught me so much about all of these issues. So, I want to thank all of the row officers who were here today, but all that I've worked with for the past seven years. I want to thank our Court of Common Pleas for first appointing me, but then the voters for electing me in 2019. But I just want to conclude by thanking our county employees, who are unsung heroes and sometimes underpaid heroes. So, if there's anything I can say that you, you've listened to or that you remember is thank our county employees for all that they do each and every day. This has been a tremendous opportunity. It's been certainly one of the highlights and honors of my life. I just want to thank all of our citizens, and I want to encourage people to just keep coming together and focus on not what separates us or what we disagree on, but what we can disagree on. And I think Montgomery County is the best place in the Commonwealth and best place in the world to live, work, and play. So, I'm not going anywhere. I will take your phone calls once a week, just once a week on that. And I just thank everyone for the opportunity and thank those who came today to speak. So, I'm gonna announce the next two meetings, which we won't be at, Joe, so you don't have to listen to this part and you don't have to put it on the calendar. They will have the reorganization, Salary Board, and Election Board meeting on January 2nd, 2024 at 3:30 PM. Will there be public comment there on that meeting?
I'll talk to the teachers.
And then the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be January 11th, 2024. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the December 14th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
A second vote.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? I think we've had enough. We'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. And then we'll move into Salary Board and welcome the Controller. Is there any public comment on Salary Board?
We have one public comment, David Morgan.
I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and I'd like to compliment Mr. Lawrence, Commissioner Lawrence, about his work with the homeless, this initiative. Mr. Williams said to us, it was wonderful, and appreciate that service. And for Commissioner Gail, I was at a Cup of Joe meeting one time, and I was really educated about the costs we face with the Justice Center and realized that the taxpayer must be considered. So, I continually come to meetings for that voice that you're mentioning so that people can make it by with all the other taxes and all the other costs with inflation. So, thank you for that awareness, and I can, I intend to come next year. And also for your interest in women having children and successful birth outcomes as we have in the Monaco Mamas program here in the county. I think the concern admittedly is that we can maybe share that success with the state level because, as I understand, Governor Shapiro might cut a program like that, so I appreciate your...
Sir, could you please confine your comments to Salary Board?
Sure. So, related to the salaries of commissioners, I think that, that we've had them and that I mentioned proposal possibly of having someone like Liz Ferry advise in the future and have a salary based on ways, maybe by the commissioner raises, maybe being, help and donate to her or to have, to have, well, it's a possibility, think about it.
Sure. Talk to Mr. Winder about that.
Or, or perhaps another model is if she finds cost savings, maybe for every dollar she saves, she saves.
Mr. Morgan, let's go.
And that's summarizing my comments. I think, think about those. Thanks very much. Best wishes, everybody, for New Year.
We have one comment online, Linda Fields.
Greetings, happy holidays. And I am overly heavy-hearted to see Ken move, but I'm also very excited to see him forward. I would, I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you, Mama Fields.
Okay. Ken, I did send a text to you and to the group this morning in the panel just to say, I wanted to thank you for the service that you have given us over the years. I've been in Montgomery County for over twenty-something years. And, you know, as a black mother, just to see you become the commissioner, I'm also the former Public Relations from Temple, so I've known Ken when he came to Temple and since then. So, I'm just very proud and thankful for the work that you've done. I'm thankful for the work that you will continue to do as we walk side by side to continue to work on the homelessness issue. I am excited about the work you're about to do, and I want to just thank Joe Gail for the service. I know we have not always been on the right mindset of sides and things, and I don't think that there's sides, it's just hope for the better of our community. So, I want to say farewell to you also and thank you for your service. But most importantly, Ken, I look forward to continuing to have your wisdom, your guidance, and advice because you put your heart into this county. And as Jamila said, riding the bikes, can't do. I'll try to walk a little bit, but I'll look forward to just continuously working with you, even on your journey for your future. And, and I hope that all of the administration at Montgomery County just share with you the importance of what you've led to our county. You are a valuable, valuable asset, and I look forward to the future work that you'll be able to do without the restrictions of county policies. And just thank you, thank you, Jamila, thank you, Joe Gail, thank you, Montgomery County Administration, and all of the people that have attended these commission meetings over time. I thank you all because public service is not an easy job, and I am just grateful that I could be a witness and a part of the process. So, God bless you all, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah and all those other things.
Thank you.
That is all for public comment.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. I am presenting two actions today. The first, you should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a fifteen-page document dated December 13th, 2023, with a timestamp of 1245. I'm gonna go off script a little bit and say, please take a look at the large number of new hires. The compensation study that you approved and implemented is definitely working, and we are definitely seeing more and more employees coming to the county, so thank you for that. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the December 14th, 2023 Salary Board presentation as given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So, moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
The second is the pay increase of four percent, which was included in the 2024 budget that has been presented for all qualified full-time and part-time employees that will be effective, the pay period beginning 1223, 2023.
Is there a motion that effective December 24th, 2023, except as restricted by statute or otherwise by Resolution 94-C, 756, or Resolution 06C.29O relating to the salaries of certain elected officials, a pay increase of four percent be granted to all qualified full-time and part-time employees? Qualified full-time and part-time employees for the purposes of this resolution excludes those employees who are members of a bargaining union, including those employees subject to status quo requirement, elected officials, employees otherwise covered by a separate agreement or resolution, and those employees who are active in the retirement process? Asking for a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
Controller Sanchez moves. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And we have a retiree acknowledgement. Christine Laura, our chief public defender, welcome.
Thank you. It is a really monumental meeting to be here, Commissioner Lawrence. It's been a short time with you, but I must say that it has been a pleasure to know you and I thank you on behalf of my office. It's a bittersweet meeting to be part of, which I think is somewhat fitting that I'm here to speak about Rich Simon, who is in the second row. Rich is celebrating thirty-four years of service with this county. In preparation for my comments today, I actually went to the original HR file that we have in our office from the 1980s. I reviewed his resume that he applied to the Public Defender's Office with while he was serving as a law clerk for Judge Ott, and actually found the Salary Board document from July 5th of 1990, a motion of Mrs. Blough, seconded by Mrs. Banning, that approved the transfer of Mr. Simon from Judge Ott's chambers to the Public Defender's Office. It's really, being here today, it's really rich in tradition that we are still doing these, these meetings, that we are having these moments. And Rich here actually began serving Montgomery County prior to 1989 when he was clerking for Judge Ott. He was an intern in 1987 with the District Attorney's Office. He was an intern again for Judge Tressler before ultimately becoming an employee here. In preparing for my comments today and speaking with colleagues that have known him for a very long time, the resounding commentary about Rich is that he is an empathetic lawyer, that he is a compassionate lawyer. He dedicated over twenty years of his service to the Juvenile Delinquency Unit, where he worked hand-in-hand with our other attorneys serving our children in this county. One of the most common things said about him by attorneys that took on his files is, have you ever seen the notes that Rich has done after a client interview? Have you ever seen the follow-up that Rich has done on those client notes? He has always led with empathy in representing our clients with open ears and an open heart, following up on every last detail that those children shared with him. After representing children in the Juvenile Delinquency Unit for decades, he moved on and actually did representation of our, in our dependency unit of at-risk children. So, when I say that he has been an attorney that kind of embodied everything that we want to see in a public defender, I mean that very sincerely. I hope that you will join me in a heartfelt, bittersweet goodbye to Mr. Simon, who has dedicated his entire legal career to Montgomery County, to the clients of the Public Defender's Office. It's been an honor to know him even for this short period of time. Thank you, Rich.
Would you like to say anything?
It's been a really interesting...
If you want to, if you're gonna do it, you gotta, this is your final closing argument.
Well, it's been a long and interesting adventure. As I was saying to Christine earlier, in my, earlier in my life, my, my family was Republican. I was intending to start out being a district attorney because who would represent those people, being my job now? Obviously, I did a 360 in terms of my politics and my, my, my understanding of the whole criminal justice system. I, I, as I said, I started wanting to be a district attorney, and when I was interning with Judge Ott, I applied to the district attorney, and the district attorney and I didn't really see eye to eye and didn't have similar personalities, so I was rejected. Judge Ott said if I wanted to be a litigator, I should apply to the Public Defender's Office since that would be as good or a better job in terms of litigation. So, I did apply and I figured out that that was really who I was. As Christine said, I spent the majority of my time here representing children, which I came to really love. It was really a passion for me, and I hope that I helped some of the people that I represented to change their lives and to make their lives better. I just, I've met so many amazing people here, and I, as I walk through the courthouse now, and everybody knows, a lot of people know that I'm retiring and are all coming up to me and congratulating me, it's, it's been, it's really been a great, great time, and certainly there've been, there've been ups and downs, but in, in general, I'm very happy with the career that I've had, and I want to thank everyone, I want to thank the county. It's been a great place to work, and I, and I look forward to, I'm intending to go into volunteering in terms of literacy with a local Norris Town organization, at least initially. So, I just want to thank everybody, it's been, it's been great, and thanks a lot.
Well, we certainly want to thank you, and I'm sure that you've helped many, but thank you very much and I wish you all the best, and it doesn't even sound like retirement. You're gonna continue to serve, and we need more citizens like you, but thank you for all that you've, all that you've done.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much and best of luck. Mr. Thompson, thank you so much for changing the story for the kids in Montgomery County and for your service. Thank you.
I wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the December 14th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So, moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none? Meeting is adjourned.
Congratulations.